I'd like to call this meeting of Lakewood City Council for Monday, August 19th to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Barth.
President.
Councilmember Bokey. Councilmember Brennster.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whelan.
President.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Do you have a forum?
Thank you. Now, would you please rise with me in a moment of silence in honor of our men and women serving overseas, followed by the flag salute.
Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We now move to proclamations and presentations. The first item is the 2019 Governor's Smart Communities Award presentation. For this, we have Mr. Ike Nakwamo- Kwan Kuo, Growth Management Services, Western Regional Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. It's really a pleasure for me to be here tonight with you. I was here when the city incorporated and worked with a lot of staff to get the city going. And have been here since that time and working with Pierce County and all the cities in there. Before I start, I want to recognize the very talented planners that you have on staff. I want to recognize Dave that I've been working with for a long time. And then the recent addition of Tiffany to the staff, too. This is, she is an excellent staff and well-respected among her peers in Pierce County and around the state. So, thank you for the commitments and the resources that you've put into planning for the city of Lakewood. So, with that, I want, like I said, I'm very happy to be here tonight to present this award for you, to you, on behalf of Governor Jay Inslee. This award highlights the governor's commitment to preserving and protecting Washington's enviable quality of life. It recognizes the hard work for our citizens, businesses, and local officials to make sure we have a clean environment, a healthy economy, and a high-quality communities, all the attributes that make our great state a wonderful place to live, work, and play, and help us to continue attracting top talent and businesses from around the world. When a community comes together to establish and carry out its vision for the future, it can attract high-quality jobs and community improvements that benefit all its residents. Today, we are celebrating a collaborative and thorough effort to implement goals, policies, and programs to focus urban growth, encourage safe, welcoming multimodal options for visitors and residents, and achieve mixed-use development and place-making. The Lakewood Downtown Plan advances Lakewood Comprehensive Plan Goals and Policies and Requirements of the Growth Management Act to create an identifiable urban center for living, working, and gathering in the city. The Downtown Plan provides an excellent blueprint to transform downtown from a typical suburban shopping center into a welcoming, enjoyable place where current and future Lakewood communities can shop, shop in green spaces, work in thriving businesses, and live in well-designed homes above shops or townhomes, comfortable for everyday life. The Lakewood community and stakeholders have been instrumental in the creation of this document. Outreach included several community meetings, public open houses, web servers in multiple languages, pop-up events at farmers markets, and collaboration with downtown businesses, one-on-one meetings with property owners, and more. The new standard document represents a reinvestment in this historic asset and regional center, including a dedicated festival street along Mortal Avenue, implementing the Lakewood Colonial Plaza Project. Some of the judges that were involved in the, the judges that were involved in selecting the awards had these comments on the Lakewood Community Plan, the Lakewood Community Plan. It says, one of them says that this plan has great potential for leveraging private investment. And another one said that the plan is really impressive and it's great place making and creating somewhere to be. And that's a quote. And then another judge added that this Lakewood's robust public outreach and program are an excellent model for other cities across the state. So, on behalf of the governor, I thank you for your hard work, innovation, and amazing model of infield development, combating urban sprawl, historic preservation, and a truly urban mixed-use walkable downtowns. So, congratulations to you, Mayor Anderson and city council members. And at this time, I will ask Tiffany if she can present the award to the mayor and the city council.
I think I have a slightly different idea. Why don't we come down for photographs? And while the council said yes to the dress, we didn't sew it. I'd like our people who were responsible for the heavy lifting, particularly Dave and Tiffany, to come down for the photo, too, please. And Becky.
Yeah.
Those who worked on it.
Yeah, we have a set of judges that are familiar with growth management that have been in the process for a long time, former department heads and former directors for the growth management. And some of their officials.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
I think this woman is a marketing director back here. So, our next item of business is a business showcase recognizing Puget Sound Orthopedics. And indicates that we should have Ms. April Betts Gibson, Executive Director, and/or Shereya Kenny, the Marketing Director, please join me at the podium. This is a matter of great personal importance to the deputy mayor and I. His back, my knee, neck, and shoulder were great, we create great demand for the orthopedic industry.
We appreciate that, thank you.
Puget Sound Orthopedics prides itself on offering leading-edge, world-class orthopedic care to its patients on a personal level, from offering satellite clinics in Tacoma and Gig Harbor to expanding its Lakewood footprint to provide more operating room space. Patients in their way well-being are at the forefront of every decision the practice makes. What started as one-doctor operation in Lakewood in 1971 has today grown into the largest independent orthopedic practice in Pierce County with 130 employees, 15 surgeons, and 10 physicians assistants across three locations. It is the only independent orthopedic practice in Lakewood and Tacoma, and one of only two independent groups in all of Pierce County. Located at 7308 Bridgeport Way West, Puget Sound Orthopedics offers a one-stop shop for patients needing orthopedic care. That includes general appointments, ambulatory surgery, physical and occupational therapy, and access to durable and medical equipment imaging. Because of these core values, it's focused on patient well-being and providing choices to Lakewood residents so they can receive quality, affordable medical care. Lakewood City Council recognizes Puget Sound Orthopedics as its August 2019 Business Showcase. I'd like to present you with this framed proclamation and a couple of our Lakewood City pins.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I'm honored to be here representing Puget Sound Orthopedics, or PSO as we lovingly call it. I started with Dr. Hirsch, who was actually the first orthopedic surgeon here in Lakewood in 1983, when he was over off of the corner of 100th and Bridgeport, when we were just a two-surgeon operation, long before the city of Lakewood was the city of Lakewood. And we're proud to serve the community of Lakewood. We often are the butt of the jokes of some of our peers in the orthopedic surgery world that we're in "Lake Hood," basically is what they call us sometimes. And nothing could be further from the truth. We're very proud to serve the community of Lakewood. We're particularly proud to serve members of our armed forces here at JBLM and have a really strong relationship. We have a resident program where we take their fourth and fifth-year residents, orthopedic residents, and we rotate them through. And they get exposure to total joints and hand surgery in a way that they wouldn't. And our physicians really are proud to give back to the community in that way. We were in 2002, I think we were the first group to test the new building codes in the city of Lakewood, and that was quite an experience. But we, again, are very proud to be, we're our home, our heart is in Lakewood. That's where we started, even though we're now in Tacoma with Mike Martin and Gig Harbor. Our heart is in Lakewood, and so I just thank you for this honor.
Would you step up for a photograph?
Sure.
Yeah, you know, the, the trauma guys, they rent, they will rent apartments up by, by Harbor, Harborview for, for residents to live up there so they can get gunshot experience. We now move to the public comment portion of the agenda. This is when any member of the public may speak to any issue of interest to the council. Whether or not it's on the agenda, please limit your comments to three minutes. CLI comes on at a 30-second warning. The red light comes on when your time has expired. Please identify yourself by name and city of residence, such as Mike Brennster or Lakewood, Washington. The first person who signed up to speak is Mr. Dennis Howgan.
Dennis Howgan, Lakewood, Washington. There was so much craziness here on the West Coast this week. There were so many good videos, I couldn't choose. So, I'm just gonna try to itemize. Item number one, Antifa behaves as a fascist organization but calls itself anti-fascist or Antifa to confuse you. So, I called Denny Hack to ask if he's yet anywhere condemned Antifa. Not. He either, in my opinion, he either thinks, he either is a dimwit or he thinks his constituents are dimwits. We had an Antifa thing here in Tacoma, you know, they shot the guy dead before he blew up the immigration center. Item number two, when Trump campaigned for his presidency, like building his skyscrapers, he understands a foundation. And he made his, his foundation was very clear. He wanted to stop illegal immigration and encourage legal immigration. Did not conflate the two, and then proceeded to work as one should and as he should as a top law enforcement officer of the United States. Then, we run up against, lawyers, throw your logbooks away, throw them away, because we run up against, you can call it any number of things, the Kilduff Doctrine of Law, which means you don't arrest on the basis of legal or illegal. You arrest if the criminal happens to have a crying child in his arms, whether it's his child or not. And then they push this and push this emotional thing against Trump. But if you're to apply that consistently, then you'd find a drunk driver on the road with two kids in the back of the car. Then what do you do? Something stupid is gonna happen. Take the wheels off the car, leave the drunk there, feed the kid some ice cream. And then, the crazy Talibs and Omar that's going on. I want you to go back because this, remember I gave you some books a long time ago? Read this book before I talk about this topic. So, you understand how the money flows, and what's crazy, what's illegal, and what's religion. And there are other experts like Bridgette Gabrielle and so on that you can read from.
Thank you.
Adios.
Next person who's signed up is Mark Pfeifer.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Mark Pfeifer, Lakewood. My issue is pretty mundane, I'm afraid, and at the risk of preaching to the choir. It's about Veterans Drive. I've been to four different presentations on Veterans Drive. The first one was last year when they, the group came and talked to the Lake City Neighborhood Association. And then there was a big presentation here, actually two. And then last week, I think it was, I was here for the study session. My wife has attended about three of those with me. She's a landscape architect by, by training and trade, University of Washington. Used to work for Yula Lee Wagner when she first graduated back in 1970 and worked in the city and county of San Francisco as a landscape architect. And she always asked me, why do these consultants keep up bringing up vegetation planting as part of these proposals? And I said, well, that's, that's because that's what they do. In other words, they're not going to insinuate themselves and say to you, well, here's the way we think you ought to build this road, but don't put any vegetation, don't put any ornamental trees. They're gonna leave that up to you to decide. Because ornamental trees and plantings, that's just part of the process. I know all of you have driven down Veterans Drive. It's not quite gravelly lake. It's certainly not with the structures there, although they're not bad. But the trees are every bit as impressive. And I can't imagine what kind of planting anybody would envision along Veterans Drive that would improve or enhance what's already there. You know, the other thing is it costs money to do that planting, and then it costs even more money to maintain it. Which, after living in San Francisco for 30 years, I can tell you, that's the last thing that they do. It's very sexy to plant. You know, that gets you all kinds of kudos. But nobody cares if you maintain. If you don't maintain, they care. But it becomes a hygiene factor, if you're familiar with those. You know, if it's there, then you just expect it, and it's no big deal. It's when you try and take it away that it becomes a big deal. So, please, when you consider what to do on veterans, take the planting money and put it on Washington Boulevard. They can use it, not Veterans Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one more person who's signed up. I have a little trouble with the name, Llewellyn.
It is my hope that what I will share with you is not too heavy, but it's heavy for me.
Would you identify yourself and your city residence?
My first name is Cecil, my last name is Llewellyn. I live in Lakewood, Washington, 9101 Wedgewood Court Southwest. I've been there for a little over 20 years. Since I've moved to the city of Lakewood, my experience unfortunately has not been a pleasant one. And for those that believe we're post-racial, we're not. I have been complaining to the Lakewood Police since Mayor Bill Harrison about issues, and the issues have not been resolved. They have been mellowed out a little bit, but they have not been resolved. My peace, my ability for happiness, my work, my earning capacity and everything else has been disshorted in your city. About three years ago, an unknown Caucasian male showed up at my house and pulled what can only be described as a George Zimmerman. I have no clue who this person is. I attempted to avoid this person approximately five times, and unfortunately, the fifth time, I had simply had it. And this is all on video, by the way. And I felt the need to protect myself, and I reached for my concealed weapon. And that person stopped in his tracks. All of this is on video. This person commenced to saying foul stuff to me. I wasn't having it, and I lost my cool. And I said foul stuff back while this person is setting up texting two of his buddies. And they showed up, no doubt, they showed up with guns, 'cause he didn't have a gun. Approximately five people in the area all conspired to do this because it happened with precision. There's been a long history of threats to my safety, threats to my life, trash thrown over my fence, eggs thrown on my vehicles. I've heard the N-word more than I can count, with threats. Watch your back, lock your door, you better watch yourself. And there's been drug activity in that area. And I've been complaining and complaining and complaining, and nothing from these Lakewood cops, other than I got 15 to 20 years of harassment. I do not have a criminal record, no arrest record, nothing else. I will confess that I did four to six years in colleges and universities to the point of graduation. I have sent this package out to each one of you, the mayor, city council, deputy mayor, city attorney, the previous city attorney, city manager, to each and every one of you, and I heard nothing back. I hope this is new to you, and I hope you did not ignore me. I'm looking for justice. I'm not asking you to just, believe me, I'm asking you to look at the proof. Is anyone interested in this?
Give it to the clerk, and she'll distribute it, sir.
I know my time is up, but I do have this on video. If you're interested in the video, I will get it to somebody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the people who have signed up to speak. That doesn't preclude you from speaking. If you wish to, if you wish to speak at public comment, please step forward to the microphone. Does anyone else wish to speak at public comment? Seeing none, I declare public comment closed. We now move to consent agenda, madam clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of July 22nd, 2019. B, approval of the minutes of the city council special meeting of July 29th, 2019. C, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of August 5th, 2019. D, motion number 2019-46, reappointing Ken Witco to serve on the Public Safety Advisory Committee through August 6th, 2022. E, resolution number 2019-18, accepting a grant award in the amount of $506,027 from the Office of Economic Adjustment for the 2015 Joint Land Use Study Recommendation Implementation. F, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Planning Commission meeting minutes of June 5th, 2019. And two, Lakewood Arts Commission meeting minutes of July 15th, 2019.
Thank you. Is there any item which any member of the council wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? Mr. Brennster.
I'd like to move item C.
Yeah, item C is removed from consent agenda. Is there any other idea? Invite a motion on the consent agenda, less item C.
So, moved?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Simpson, seconded by Mr. Whelan, that we adopt the consent agenda, less item C. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We now move to item C, madam clerk.
Item C, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of August 5th, 2019. I've submitted corrective minutes to reflect the vote of opposition for councilmember Barth on ordinance number 715.
Mr. Whelan.
I understand that there was a scrivener's error on the meeting minutes for August 5th, 2019 with regard to the vote on ordinance number 715, which was amendment to the provisions of the Lakewood Municipal Code relating to the park code. And the corrective minutes, I believe, now accurately reflect the voting roll call. Brennster's reason for removing this item, but I would move that we submit the corrected minutes to the record.
Take that, take that as a scrivener's error will now vote on approval of the corrected minutes.
I seconded.
Moved by Mr. Whelan, seconded by Mr. Simpson, that we adopt the corrected minutes of the August 5th meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now move to regular agenda, unfinished business. Unfinished business come before the council?
There's none, mayor.
New business?
No, mayor.
Reports by the city manager, Mr. Cott.
Thank you, mayor, good evening. Just a few updates for you. On October 22nd, Travel Tacoma, Tacoma Sports is gonna have their annual meeting, and our economic development manager has five tickets. It'll be at the Pantages Theater from 2:30 to 4:30 PM. Two of those five tickets are already taken, so if any of you have an interest in attending, let us know, and we'll get you, get you registered. Again, it's on October 22nd. I believe that's a Wednesday. I believe that's a Wednesday afternoon, if, uh, if my memory, um, is correct there.
Tacoma Sports Commission?
Yes, um, yes, Mayor. It's the, uh, Travel Tacoma and Tacoma Sports Annual Meeting. Uh, so new construction is, uh, getting underway over in, uh, North Thorne Lane. It's actually a sewer main project, um, to drive sewers, um, from North Thorne Lane, uh, to Portland Avenue at Harry Todd Park, as well as down Wood Lawn Street. So we're gonna have some, uh, uh, traffic issues over in that area for about the next, um, month, month, month or two. So, um, the, the project again is gonna put in sewer lines as well as, uh, road restoration, uh, particularly for North Thorne Lane, um, in that area. Uh, some other projects that continue, um, Angle Lane over at Fort Stillicum Park, uh, continues to move forward. The water line has been put in, sewer and, um, a communication conduit is in the process of being installed. Um, once that's all done, um, the roadway will actually have an overlay similar to the entrance roadway coming into Fort Stillicum proper. Uh, we anticipate completion or major completion of the project by the end of September. Uh, the chip seal over in Lake City, as well as Oakbrook, um, is, is now completed and the contractor, uh, did a, did a nice job. If you haven't had a chance to drive it, I'd suggest going out and taking a look at it. Uh, likewise pavement patching throughout the city, uh, continues in a number, in a number of areas, as well as, uh, road striping, uh, to replace a number of, uh, roadway markings, stop bars, crosswalks, arrows, et cetera. Uh, Colonial Plaza, uh, the project is essentially completed. Uh, we're ready for our, um, grand opening on, um, September fourteenth. Motor Ave is open. Um, uh, speed limit signs have not yet been installed. Uh, speed limit is actually gonna be twenty miles an hour going through there. However, since it's not posted pursuant to Washington state law, the speed limit's twenty-five. So if you're driving through there, don't go faster than twenty-five miles an hour. Um, last week I reported that the police department in the month of August was gonna be undertaking a, uh, specific track, traffic emphasis in ten specific areas throughout, um, the city based on, um, uh, you know, citizen complaints and observations by our police officers. For the days August ninth through August thirteenth, um, there were a hundred and ninety-six contacts or a hundred and ninety-six individuals pulled over. Um, of that, a hundred and fifty-seven received speeding infractions. Um, and what the officers are doing is that you get a speeding infraction if you're going eight miles an hour or over. However, if you're going under that, you get, um, a little bit of, uh, education on the rules of the road here in, 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 in Washington State. Uh, feather banner enforce, enforcement, uh, the city council adopted a revised sign code that now prohibits feather banners. And so CSRT has begun enforcement of that. And, uh, last week, um, they contacted fifty-nine businesses and property owners along Bridgeport, Pacific Highway, South Tacoma Way, Stillicum Boulevard at a hundredth and Lakeview, um, Lakeview Avenue, um, and just had one-on-one conversations with folks and just let them know what the new code is and gave them until this week to comply. So, um, we've moved it through those areas and then we'll move into other areas of the city. We expect it'll probably take about two or three weeks, uh, before we get through the whole city. And then if they don't comply, then, you know, we'll move forward with some kind of civil infraction or so. But we're, right now, we're trying to, uh, obtain voluntary compliance. Um, Wash Dot, um, the regional administrator, John Wynans, um, had a conversation with him about a month ago or so about, you know, the next phase of I-5 here in Pierce County from South Thirty-eighth all the way down to Mounts Road and, you know, essentially adding a, you know, through our area as well as through JBLM, you know, a fifth lane, um, and as well as an HOV lane, uh, further to the north. Actually, it will be a HOV lane through the whole corridor. And, um, long story short, um, he, uh, is moving forward with getting together a stakeholder group, which would include the city of Lakewood and beginning to have those discussions. That aligns very nicely as we begin to move forward with our legislative agenda and legislative prior, priorities for the upcoming session of which I did review with him and just give him a courtesy heads up. Likewise, I've met with the city of Tacoma and had conversations with the city of Dupont on this as well. So, um, it's kind of all coming together nicely, um, if, 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 if you will. Washington State Department of Commerce, um, is, uh, gonna be initiating a call for projects here in the very near future and it has to do with the state's version of the defense, what they call the Defense Community Compatibility Account, or the state level of the, uh, Defense Community Infrastructure Program. This was a piece of legislation adopted by the state legislature last session that's been spearheaded by Senator Steve O, uh, Steve Conway, uh, for a number of years, actually. Uh, the downside is that it's not funded. However, what Commerce is doing, and, and by the way, that it's, it has to do with improvements as it relates to military installations. And, um, so, uh, here in Lakewood, um, we're gonna be pursuing, uh, two applications, one through SSMCP as it relates to the North Clear Zone, specifically relocating tactical tailor and continuing to get funds in support of that. And then, of course, um, working with our federal partners to obtain funding for Wash, the Washington Boulevard, North Gate, Edgewood, uh, project. So, um, they're expecting to open the applications, uh, by the middle part of September. They expect it to be open for about six of eight weeks. They will then compile a list, they will prioritize them, and then it's our understanding, based on conversations that we've had with them, that that priority list of projects will then be brought forward to the state legislature to fund. Don't know if it will be funded this session, the short session, but most likely the next, uh, biennial budget session, um, that will kick off in January of two thousand twenty-one. But at the very least, we wanna get our projects in the queue, in the queue on that. As far as your council cal, calendar goes, uh, there's one more summer concert series, which is, um, this Thursday, called Candy Shop, which is a disco funk dance pop band, so I'm sure there'll be a lot of dancing out there. Uh, September sixth, uh, Saturday, I'm sorry, Friday's, you, you're looking at me funny.
I know. You were gonna...
I, I know, I was wait, I was waiting for that. My, my hips don't move, Deputy Mayor. All right, that's just how it is.
How the funk is your thing?
Um, uh, Friday, September sixth, Partner for Parks is gonna have their annual fundraising. It's gonna be a bingo event over at the, um, McGavick Center. Also, on, um, the weekend of the thirteenth, fourteenth and fifteenth, which is right in the middle of the Colonial Plaza grand opening, um, the, um, Lakewood Film, Art and Book Fest is gonna be happening over at the McGavick Center. If you haven't had, had a chance to check the itinerary, uh, they got a lot of really cool, uh, movies, as well as authors, um, gonna be, gonna be coming, coming into town. So that'll be a real fun, a fun, a fun event. So, um, I think with that, that's my report, Mayor.
Any questions for the city manager?
So I got, I got an inquiry, uh, regarding the, uh, feather banners already. Get a quick chronology on that. I know feather banners were banned and then we stopped enforcing it because of the Supreme Court decision and uncertainty as to the validity of the sign code. And then we reinstituted. But if I can just get dates on that period that it was banned, 'cause we, we, we had prohibited them for a long time and we never, we never repealed that, was my recollection.
The, my understanding is that the feather banner signs were allowed on a temporary basis for thirty days.
For grand opening or something.
For grand openings and then, and then that was it. And they would, and then somebody would have a grand opening, put up feather banner signs, and then everybody would put up feather banner signs and then would be trying to get out there to communicate what the code was. So the last revision that the council implemented was to essentially remove the, you know, the, the temporary, just allowing them for temporary, uh, purposes, which means they're not allowed across the board for anything.
And that was done in conjunction with our content neutral revisions?
Yes, yes, it was, Mayor. That's correct, yes. And that was a Supreme case, uh, Supreme Court case of, um...
Arizona City, Gilbert.
Gilbert, yeah, Gilbert, the Gilbert case out of, uh, Arizona. So I'll be looking for that town manager at ICMA.
Home of Joe's Barbecue.
Any other questions for the city manager? Council comments, Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Not a, not a question or comment, but, uh, just to share a complaint that I heard from citizens, uh, dogs around Waha Lake Walk Round is there without leashes and it's, a lot of people being frightened by the dogs off the leash, 'cause they are kinda dangerous looking dogs. That's just a complaint that I've been hearing. And, uh, one other thing is I had the opportunity to represent the city at the, um, Polynesian Lua on Saturday. Lots of fun and, uh, a lot of great entertainment. Thank you.
Has Lua found a substitute fired dancer yet?
Not yet.
Okay. Her, uh, she, she thought that maybe her, uh, her nephew coming back here to Fort Lewis would, uh, after he's graduated from the military academy, would be able to step into that role, but I think he's pretty busy.
They, oh, they'll miss that.
Yeah.
And that part was omitted this year, this time.
I think Councilmember Simpson would be an outstanding, flame guy.
Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you very much, Mayor, on that auspicious note. Just a couple items, uh, driving around, uh, one hundred and twenty-third Street in the Spring Brick neighborhood is now eighty-something percent complete. You can drive through there and the little jog that the state made us do is kinda nice, you know, because it takes it down a little ways and so you're not, you're not really competing with traffic. They still haven't lined anything for the turn lane and, but there, there are, you know, so it's now knocked over to Forty-seventh Avenue and there are already people, some guy goes jogging by on the thing and some lady goes walking by, so people are already using it. So it's kind of done exactly what we wanted to do. Now it's just opened up that neighborhood, um, and so hopefully we'll see some redevelopment there. And I guess the, the kidney place is almost done. I didn't drive by it, but, 'cause I just went down and back. So the roads, you know, this, they have to do the landscaping and some other things and line it, but it looks, it looks good. So, uh, glad that project was complete and I'm excited about Motor Ave, that we can get through there. I drove through there, hopefully not too fast, but, um, I drove through there the other day, just took in the ambiance. But when will the lights be going in? Do we have a date on that? Okay. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Branstad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This afternoon, I represented the city at a special meeting of the South Sound nine-one-one. The purpose of that meeting was to approve a construction contract to build the, uh, the, the commu, new communications center that will be over on Pacific Avenue. And that, uh, the board did vote to award that contract, uh, to, uh, Castle and Associates, which is the, who is the, the low bidder. Um, the, the contract is for thirty-two million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars, uh, seven-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars, um, with a, a five-million-dollar contingency, should it be needed. The, uh, uh, this was, um, a long process that is quite some time after we thought we would, we would, we would be there. The, the last delay of about a month had to do with, uh, another bidder protested award of the, the contract, uh, which was resolved in, in Superior Court. One issue that has arisen around the contract, um, and it, uh, involves some discussion today and some action, is that the, the members of the South Sound nine-one-one board from the city of Tacoma wanted to insert into the contract a provision to, uh, essentially require a certain percentage of apprentices and of local labor into the contract. The, the, the legal opinion of that was that because it wasn't something that was in the bid, uh, documents, that, uh, you, you couldn't change it at the, at the awarding of the contract, uh, to be able to go and do that. And so the, the board did not entertain that in moving for the contract. It, there was an effort to then promote a letter and a change order to the contract to be able to go and do that. That, that in actuality, because this was a special meeting and that wasn't an item on the agenda, um, the motion to do that that was made was found to be out of order because it wasn't on the agenda for a special meeting. But I'm expecting it to come back at the regular meeting, um, next week on, on Wednesday. That the, you know, my, my own inclination is that, that while that's a valid economic development strategy for cities and for the county and for folks to do that, that the South Sound, the charge to the South Sound nine-one-one board is to spend a very specific, some very specific revenue sources that were earmarked specifically to, for, for public safety and that, um, and that the board should not venture off into having an economic development employment, uh, agenda. Uh, but I'm expecting that I to have to vote on that or voice an opinion on that at the upcoming meeting next week on Wednesday. And I'm looking for some guidance from you and my colleagues here as to the, the, the city of Lakewood's view about the, uh, South Sound nine-one-one going into that arena.
I, I could have some additional background on that. First of all, going back to the original, uh, plan, this was an estimate of an all-in bond issue of eighty-six million dollars, supposedly reduced to seventy-two by the sixty-one, twenty, or whatever it was, process, but the analysis of that hadn't been completed, so it was really closer to an eighty-million-dollar process when you, uh, when you had it all-in. And that has been reduced to a bond issue that's going to be fifty-nine million dollars. So it's a, two, two real significant things have happened in this big delay, uh, or a couple-year delay. Uh, one is that there's a new form of, uh, sustainable governance for this body and the second one is that about twenty million dollars of taxpayers' money has been saved on the building. Um, because that includes also the, the build-out and, and, uh, the refurbishment of the backup. What apparently happened with Tacoma was that Tacoma has included at the behest of some of their constituencies, project labor agreements, which required a little bit of everything. Said we have to use so much local labor, we have to have certain, uh, minority women's business, rep, underrepresented business, we have to have so much apprenticeship, and they engrafted some of their contracts with that. Evidently, they haven't monitored that and it didn't go as planned. Uh, contractors are scrambling in this environment to get labor wherever they can get it, uh, although there is a great propensity for labor to want to become local. So if you're hiring out of the hall, for example, you live in Graham, where do you wanna work? Thirty-Fifth Street and Pacific or downtown Seattle? Uh, wages are gonna be the same. So, a, and there are a couple of, of the major subs are local here, so i, it's gonna be primarily that. But it appears that the Tacoma City Council got some heat from their constituents because the project labor agreements didn't have the result that they wanted. And they hadn't brought it up. No one whispered about it until after this contract was bid and awarded. And, and the successful award was determined. And then they wanna go back and say, we want to engraft, it, it's frankly a show because they've been told you can't, we, we bid one contract and we accepted it, you know, you didn't bring it up before. They, they blew it if they wanted to do that. Not saying they would have been successful with the South Sound nine-one-one board if they brought that up, but it hadn't, it hadn't been a subject until after the fact. So then they tried to kibosh the contract for frankly purely political reasons, not for economic reasons. So, um, that's where we are. But as you can...
Contracts for thirty-two million. Who's the other?
It's thirty-two, thirty-two million contingencies. Uh, they have to outfit it. There's a lot of expensive equipment. One-point-nine million's gonna go to the, uh, Thirty-Fifth Street facility as a backup.
All-in fifty-nine million.
All, all-in is fifty-nine million.
Yeah, there is a bill that goes to the architect. It's not a part of this contract, is, and, and some other things, but all in all...
Project management.
...well below what was always envisioned as, as the real cost of the project. That doesn't mean that South Sound 911 doesn't have some future issues that no one knows the cost of around system, radio system infrastructure and some other things that will need investment at some point in time in the future once a plan is put in place.
Is there a rate reduction since the cost may be less than anticipated?
There, yeah, that's one possibility. The, the cash flow anticipated by South Sound 911 at the current rate structure would, was already enough to provide a cushion so that this lower bond will result in a rather significant cushion. Now, there's two, two elements to that. One is that, or two possibilities. One is you can reduce the rates, but the other one is the one-tenth, one percent runs out in seventeen years. And at that point, you're going to have systems that are seventeen years old. And you need a reserve. You need some reserve for that. So, prudence would dictate that some of that's reserved along the way.
Or you have to...
Is the bond for the building? It matches the one-tenth, one percent. It'll be, it'll be seventeen years effectively. Yeah. Yeah. So, anyway, there's, that's where we are.
Okay. And I guess the only other comment is I did attend the last concert at, at the park. Everybody has music that they like. This, this was probably of the ones we have had so far, the one that was most enjoyable to me because of doing it. And I, I also appreciated that the, the, Mr. Young, the saxophonist in his group, were more interactive with the audience than in any of the previous concerts that I thought went over well, even if it wasn't the best-attended concert. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Barth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, during my day job, I had the privilege of touring the city last week and showing it off. And I just want to say, I'm really proud of all of the accomplishments that our staff and, and the council and, we're going in the right direction. I got to show off Forts Tillicum Park, the Tillicum Community and all of the improvements out there, Gravel Lake Drive, Springbrook area. And, and these people had been here a number of years ago and they were just shocked at Springbrook. The Colonial Center project, they thought that was phenomenal and what an attraction for, you know, they wanted to know what, what stores are going in there, what little shops, what, you know. And I said, "It's, it's an open canvas." But it was exciting to look at it from a different point of view. You know, we, we drive through here every day and we're concentrating on getting from A to B. So, it was fun. The industrial park, the, the buildings that have gone up out there, Dutch Brothers, whoa, that was a big hit. How come it's not open yet? And then, I took them out to, out to Tillicum and the Overpass and the, you know, Berkeley and the Thorn Lane activity. And they're just blown away about all of the things that are, that are happening. So, I just thought I would share that from a different perspective.
Mr. Simpson.
Very nice. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to sort of build on what Councilmember Barth said. Last week, I was at the House, minding my own business, probably doing dance lessons. Yeah, it's the first two, minding my own business. But anyway, I got a call from constituent number one, otherwise known as my wife. And she asked me to put supper together, which I, I did. In order to do that, I went over to Albertson's. And as I was standing near the deli, I looked to my right and there was a man standing there. And he looked familiar to me. And I thought to myself, "I've seen this guy somewhere. And I think it's City Hall or down here at the, at the podium." So, I turned to him and I asked him. I said, "Sir, you look very familiar. Have you ever been to Lakewood City Hall?" And he says, "Oh, yes, many times." And so, now I'm thinking, I'm waiting for the next shoe to drop. And I said, "Well, how did this city, how did it go for you?" And he said, "Well, I was doing some work on my house. I didn't have a permit and I got red-tagged. And now I'm braced." I'm literally thinking, "I'm going to really hear it." He says, "But you know that city staff at Lakewood City Hall was so polite and so understanding, I have nothing but good to say about them. And so, Mr. Caulfield, if you would let all hands on deck know in that department that they did one heck of a job by a guy that could have been very hostile. Thank you very much." And that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Whalen.
Thank you. Well, just dovetailing on those two comments briefly, I talked to a few folks about potential investment in some of the new areas that we've invested infrastructure monies into. A comment that came back, and I think we're doing part of this, which goes to the Planning Department, there are folks that are interested in bringing new business, relatively small-type businesses, the boutiques, we're looking for, the restaurants made of small bars. And the question came up, does Lakewood offer a kind of liaison person who can help facilitate the one-stop-shop role, not just the permit piece, but also there you have the Health Department piece, you've got the Pierce County Sewer piece, which we know we dovetail a little bit, you've got the Liquor Control Board, all these little pieces that are out there to get in the business up on its feet a little bit quicker than might otherwise happen. And I don't know if we have. I know we do pre-app work that we offer for tenants, potential tenants coming into the city or potential owners. But it's just a thought. And it was actually a good one from this potential businessperson to say, "Jeez, it would be nice if there was some person who could direct you to all the different resources so I could make sure I ticked off the right boxes to get on my feet sooner than later." So, don't know if we have that, but it would probably be a good thing to think about. In terms of stuff going on, the pavilion in the park on Thursday, I thought, was a shining light. We got a lot of people up dancing. I didn't see the city manager dancing at that particular concert, but there's one left this coming Thursday that'll be his opportunity. The gentleman who was the artist, Justin Young, was, I mean, just a little bit of background story there. He came to Lakewood as a result of an invitation that I extended to him after I got to know him. So, he and I were at the Farmborough Air Show when I was part of the contingent for the Pierce County's Econ Development Team two years ago. He's an engineer by trade. He has a master's in business, undergraduate degree in engineering, and works for a company in the Boeing supply chain, marketing, injectable plastic molded products or whatever. But music is his passion. And so, he started to do a lot of work, obviously, over the last several years with public concerts at the wineries and such. And I said, "You gotta come to Lakewood. We gotta get you in Lakewood." And thankfully, Sally was, Martinez was very willing to reach out to him and booked him for the concert. And he was very thankful. And I hope he comes back next year or is invited to do so because he was, I thought he was fantastic. He was really engaged with the audience. We could certainly get a larger crowd in there next time around. Couple of comments that I received back on the concerts in the park. As we get later into the summer, the lighting starts to get a little lower in the sky around eight, eight-thirty. It would be nice if we can think about helping the Parks Department have some funding to invest in lighting for the stage. I know oftentimes, the performers bring their own lights, but if we had some light standards that could actually illuminate the stage a little bit better, that would be, I think, a helpful thing. The other thing in terms of building the crowd base, the one comment I get sometimes from people is, "Jeez, if only I would have heard of it or known about it," which just makes all of us want to, you know, clench our teeth because I don't know how much more we can communicate about what's going on. But it does raise the issue of, is it, is there an opportunity for the city to actually have more of a reader board presence? I know we do at the police station. We've talked about it over the years. Is it time to think about, on the heels of doing the work for the social service clubs on Bridgeport, that whole signage area that we're going to embellish, is it an opportunity for us to think about investing a little bit more thoroughly into a reader board sign? Because then you'd have, you'd catch a bunch of traffic coming down Bridgeport into the town center. You do have the police station one on Lakewood Drive. Is there an opportunity for us to do a better job of marketing city events on our own reader board in a placemaking area that we're going to improve anyway? So, I throw it out there. I talked to the city manager a little bit. He would want, of course, guidance from us if that's our directive to think about. And they would bring back some proposals for us and some pricing. And we'd have to look at some budget items. But I think there's some value to doing that. So, I throw that out there for that. And then, finally, again, on the heels of the manager's comment about increased police presence, I am all in on that. I think hallelujah brother and sister for doing that because more police presence in town generates, I think, a favorable impression by not only residents but business owners that we're, we're out there paying attention to bad behavior. Not that we're trying to trick people on speeding tickets, but we certainly have the opportunity to have more presence to reduce knucklehead activism in the central business district in the neighborhoods. And so, the more we can do, both vehicular presence and bicycle presence, the better because the public loves it when they see us out there. So, I applaud you for doing that. Open up for comments, conversations a little bit on the signage piece, just so we can give some feedback. May, may not be completely the time now, but it's worth a chat.
I think it's an idea well worth pursuing, Jason. The more we, in fact, I was listening to you and I was thinking, you know, we built our signs up in thirteen or fourteen areas. You know, looking back in retrospect, if we could have put a reader board in each and every one of those, we'd have our exits covered. But that's not going to happen. So, let's go with what you say. And I think we should explore that.
I'm open to exploring it. I'm a little, be a little concerned with the clutter that is Bridgeport. Getting lost in that. So, it depends on the site.
And my thought was, you know, with the Colonial Center, if you could do it in the, I call it the grassy knoll area, closer to the street section. If we start having that as a festival street, festival location, people might pay attention to that. If we had an attractive sign there to announce city activities, you'd catch a lot of traffic coming down Gravel Lake Drive to that intersection. But I don't know the traffic counts. The manager would know that better than I. But we're taking...
Mr. Brenseder.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I, I look at the, we've made a lot of really good strides in the communication side of things the past several years. And I, so I, I'd want to run this idea through with the communications manager to see how well it would integrate with what we're already doing, rather than do something that's standalone, off somewhere. I mean, we're just embarking on a, a branding strategy and, and, and some other things that, so it's, I would, would just sort of want to go about doing it, but being sure that would integrate well with our overall communication strategy.
Mr. Bulkey.
I recently sat through a presentation for a sign. I mean, there really are some neat concepts. They're not concepts. They're new signs using LED. And there's several generations of LED. And the group that I was, I was with decided on one level down from the, the, I mean, the newest generation is essentially like our, our screens on our iPads here. I mean, they're just very clear. They're incredible. And they're very flexible. And one of the things that the individual who was selling it talked about is, you know, the, the access now to it. You can do it through your phone. I mean, you, so, so the city manager, he could designate somebody or somebodies. They could, they could actually do it with their, and so, when there's emergency management issues, you can use the sign for that, assuming you have power. Or if there's cancellations of various things like that, just like how schools use them. But these would be accessible. I mean, they're really, it's, it's worth considering. I think for maximum effect, you want to get where the traffic counts are best. Clutter is an issue in a lot of areas where there would be good traffic counts. So, placement isn't easy. But I, but I think some, I, I think the flexibility that these new generation of signs gives you and the ability to kind of keep that message fresh. And, and then, when incidents occur, you can let people know what's going on. We may see some, some other values in that. But I, I agree that there's some, some things we need to work through. And certainly, staff could, could pursue that.
Sounds like we have consensus for a study session item before we...
Yeah, nothing in a hurry, but when we have a hole to take a look at that. Yeah, I forget how long ago it was. I once owned some stock in a company that had kind of the next-generation signs for, or scoreboard signs, you know, for stadiums. And so, I followed that for a while. And the technology is really pretty amazing. And then, got to see AT&amp;T in, in Dallas where, where the replay is literally from the twenty-yard line to the twenty-yard line and twenty yards high. So, it's sixty feet by one-eighty. And you find yourself looking there because when they place the ball, you can, on the screen, if you're lower second level where we were sitting, you can actually see the dimples on the ball. I mean, it's amazing.
Never thought about the emergency management portion of it, though, for alerts and stuff. That was not a bad idea.
So, I too had occasion to drive through. The Colonial Plaza has completed. I was going under twenty miles an hour because I wanted to go really slow so I could see things. And, and the thing that struck me is that I think that design has accomplished the calming effect you wanted. It feels like you're pulling it into a parking lot. And, and the feel is you want to slow down because...
They're having people zip them through. I saw the other day, thirty-five and forty.
Yeah, that, people are going to look at, at that as a cut-through, but it's made it kind of inconvenient to do that. Tuesday, I attended the change of command. Major General Burleson relinquished command to Major General Brunson, the Seventh Infantry Division, heads to Korea. Saw Raul Vanderluke there from Congressman Heck's office. And he indicated that DCIP funding was still alive, but it's in the bowels of the Senate. So, they don't know what's going to come out. So, it was last Tuesday. And I haven't heard anything from Association Defense Community since then. So, they're still hoping that they can get the initial funding for that bucket. So, that's all I have. Is there anything else, Mr. City Manager? No. And the personnel matter that we're working on is still in my pin drive. It's not quite done. It will be to you during midweek this week so that you have a chance to look at it before the meeting. If I'd stayed up last night, I could have finished. We're adjourned.